Twenty-five regular meeting of the Board of Education. The Board just returned from its board working session. And please rise for the punch to the flag.
President, Ladies and Gentlemen. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a duty of justice for all.
Okay, let's start with a reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Next is the approval of the revised agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And that is our public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six Code of Conduct, Dr. Hassler.
Sure. Before we get into the public hearing portion of the approval of the Code of Conduct, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the changes from year to year that we're making and proposing in the Code of Conduct. So, just for everybody's information, state law requires that the Code of Conduct is approved every year by the local boards of education. We typically put the Code of Conduct on the, on a summer Board of Education agenda so that way we start the school year fresh to be able to communicate any updates regarding the Code of Conduct to the community. We're required to have a public hearing, which is what we're having initially, where the Code of Conduct gets published on the district website under Board Docs for people to review. If anybody has any questions or feedback that they would like to provide, they're welcome to provide that feedback. And then it gets presented to the Board for approval. Once approved, a copy of the Code of Conduct has to be published on the district website for everybody to have access to it. It also gets printed, and there are printed copies that are available in every single school. Plain language versions of the Code of Conduct get woven into each school's student handbook, and that information gets communicated to the community. An important part of the Code of Conduct is a cover letter. Once approved by the Board, I write a cover letter, and we're required to share with the community verbatim what the changes are from year to year because it's a fairly in-depth document. This year's Code of Conduct has five recommended changes that we've made from last year's version to this year's version. The first update is regarding artificial intelligence. We included language in the academic integrity section regarding undisclosed or unauthorized use of artificial intelligence in student work, basically saying that students need to disclose any use of AI in their work to a teacher and get permission from a teacher or administrator in order to be able to do that. On page twenty-six, we updated the section on emergency situations. This is something that was required by the State Education Department. They changed some of their language regarding emergency drills and evacuations within the school building, specifically shelter in place is now called shelter in place or sheltering, hold in place is now called either hold in place or a hold, and a lockout is now being called secure lockout. And we basically take that language from the State Education Department and include it in the Code of Conduct. On page thirty-six, we had an update to the student dress code section. You may recall at the June fourth Board of Education meeting, our previous student representative spoke briefly about some recommendations that the student body was making regarding the implementation of the student dress code, and they basically asked if we could include language, and I can read the language for you. If and when possible, staff will use reasonable efforts to avoid addressing dress code issues in front of other students and to address concerns outside of instructional time. All changes that get put into the Code of Conduct, we run it by legal counsel, we speak with the administrative team and with the staff to make sure that, you know, the language is appropriate, so we're including that language in the Code of Conduct. The fourth change is we update the DASA coordinators across each of the seven buildings on an annual basis, so that section has been updated. And the final section is, the final update is in the phone use and personal electronic device section. So this section was one that already existed within the Code of Conduct. Now, because of the distracted free learning policy, we've taken language from both the law and the recently approved policy by the Board of Education and woven that language to ensure that our cell phone and personal electronic device section in the Code of Conduct is in compliance with what the new law states. However, I will also say that there are elements, there were elements in the previous version that we wanted to make sure that we maintained the integrity of that within our Code of Conduct. So, when you read it, the language sounds a little bit confusing because we've used some of the language that is actually explicitly outlined in the law. And we differentiate between internet-enabled devices and non-internet-enabled devices because the law itself states that internet-enabled devices need to be off and away, they're prohibited from bell to bell. We previously had that policy in practice in place. However, the difference is now internet-enabled devices have to be stowed away and off in a pouch at the secondary level and in a bookbag or a locker. Previously, they did not have to get placed in a pouch. So now, we're saying internet-enabled devices in accordance with the policy are going to be off and in a pouch and in a way, in backpacks and/or lockers. However, non-internet-enabled devices such as, and we've received a number of questions from the community about this, about various other devices, non-internet-enabled devices like MP3 players, CD players, tape players, cameras, video recorders, audio recorders, things that still have uses within the school district, those need to be off and away, but they can be used during the day with permission from a staff member. So if you're a member of the yearbook and you have a camera and you're going around the building taking pictures for the yearbook, that is not something that is changing, that is going to be permissible when you receive authorization from a staff member in order to be able to do that. If you're in a study hall or in the library and you have an MP3 player that is not internet-enabled, you do have the ability to be able to use that. So that is an element of our previous Code of Conduct that we tried to maintain while still making the policy align with what the law states. So, that is basically the update in that section. We took the language from the policy prohibiting internet-enabled devices, making them required to be stowed away in the locked pouches during the day from bell to bell, but the non-internet-enabled devices still need to be off, but still can be used with the permission of a staff member within the school district. The majority of the language still remains intact from the previous policy that existed. That's it regarding our updates to the Code of Conduct for this year.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay, so an approval?
Sure. I don't think, I spoke with the student, no one signed up for any public comment, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Code of Conduct, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six has been approved. Okay. Questions or comments from interested citizens? Ms. Sudden, there are none, correct?
No.
No. Has similarly, no update on questions or comments raised? Okay, so Dr. Hassler?
Okey-dokey. So thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. This is another item that typically happens over the summer. State law requires that we present to the Board of Education our school safety and educational climate data that is submitted to the Commissioner on an annual basis. The deadline for submitting the data for the school year is in July. In two thousand and twenty-three, a regulation was passed requiring school districts to also adopt a school safety and educational climate policy, which we did, and included in that policy is the requirement to present the data to the school board and present it publicly for the community. So now, every single summer, it's usually the first board meeting in August because the data gets submitted in July, the first board meeting in August is when this data gets presented to the community, hence this presentation. Just a very brief overview, it's Commissioner Regulation one hundred that requires all school districts to report various forms of violent or disruptive incidents that occur over the course of the school year. For us, we submit eight different kind of buckets of information. Each of our seven schools submit their building respective, their respective building information, as well as we present any district-wide items which are inclusive of students that may have alternate placements throughout the, you know, in out-of-district settings. There are eleven different categories that get presented. I'll speak a little bit more about what those eleven categories are in a moment, along with very specific criteria about what it means to be reported within that. There are cyberbullying incidents, there are other bullying-related incidents, there are threats, there are drug-related incidents, and the state provides very detailed language about what does and does not categorize as each of those different areas. There's a lot of data that gets included in this data submission, however, only portions of that are going to be spoken about tonight because some of the data also includes the number of victims, the number of offenders, the number, the type of interventions, the various types of consequences that are done. However, because you'll see in a moment that some categories have very few instances, and we don't speak about that publicly because it may contain personally identifiable information about students that may have been impacted by that specific situation. So the only information that I'm going to be presenting tonight is the information that is publicly accessible on the State Education website when the state releases that data. So, I shared that in two thousand and twenty-three was the beginning of when this started, so this is, just to kind of give a little bit of context, this is our data that was presented in two thousand and twenty-three, just to give you again a little bit of a historical perspective. These are the eleven categories that we have to submit on. Homicide, sexual offenses, assault, weapons possession, DASA incidents excluding cyberbullying, DASA incidents including cyberbullying, bomb threats, false alarms, threats of violence, use, possession, or sale of drugs, use, possession, or sale of alcohol. Once again, these are the number of incidents that we had back in two thousand and twenty-three. The reason why I am sharing this information is because this was data that was presented at the beginning of last year's presentation. And so this was the data that was presented last summer for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'm sharing this with you because you may recall that there was a conversation about a notable increase in the use, possession, and sale of drugs. From the twenty-two, twenty-three school year where we had thirty-two incidents, we saw an increase to sixty-two incidents at the high school and an increase of twelve incidents at the middle school. And we had a fairly lengthy conversation about various factors that could be contributing in that, to that in last year's Board of Education meeting. Again, I'm providing this to give a little bit of historical background on each of these different categories. This is our previous year's data that was just recently submitted to the State Education Department. What I took the liberty to do was to show you where the shifts were in each of those different categories. Green represents a reduction in a category, red represents an increase in a particular category. So you'll notice the first four columns, homicide, sexual offense, assault, and weapons possession, those are categorized as major incidents. We did have one assault, one weapons possession in the high school two years ago, we didn't have any in those categories, so we had no instances of any of the four major categories. We saw a slight increase, we went from, I think, six overall DASA incidents up to eight DASA incidents overall across the school district last year, so there was a slight increase in that. We also noticed a slight increase in threats of violence. Just to clarify, a threat of violence could be a student making a threat to another student, that could be online, that could be in person, that could be in any particular way. A threat of violence is, is a little bit different than a threat of violence, a threat to the school specifically, which could potentially fall under the bomb threat category. I also want to draw your attention to the use and possession or sale of drugs category. We saw a decrease this past year in that category, closer to the level that I showed you in the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. I think that there were thirty-two incidents two years ago. The previous, the next year, we saw that slight uptick. This year, we saw another reduction from the sixty-two incidents during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-seven incidents at the high school in twenty-four, twenty-five. There was an increase in the use, possession, or sale of alcohol category, the high school had one incident last year, and there was an increase to two incidents this year. Once again, this is the data that was submitted up to State Ed. You can go on the SSEC portion of the State Ed website. This information is not yet published, but this is, you know, we're required to present to the Board what we submitted to the state. Eventually, after the state reviews all of the data, it will become publicly accessible. As of right now, you, I believe you'll only be able to see up to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but soon the state will be releasing this information statewide, and this information will be accessible on the State Ed website.
So Eric, you said that it was a slight increase in threat of violence, but it went from zero at the high school to twelve.
Correct.
That doesn't sound.
Slight. In compar, when you go from zero to twelve, it seems like, yes, agreed, yep.
And do we, do we know what, was there kind of a theme about?
I spoke to the high school administration about that, and I don't think that there was anything notably different that they saw, it just seems like there were across the school year from the beginning to the end, an increase in kids making threats to other students. And I believe, one of the reasons why I shared with you the twenty-two, twenty-three school years, we had five that year. Last year, in general, we, when we went from twenty-two, twenty-three, we saw quite a sharp decrease to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in DASA incidents and threats of violence. There was a decrease, but there was a sharp increase in drug use. This year, we seem to revert back to an uptick in some DASA incidents, an uptick in the threats of violence, but a decrease in the drug use. So it kind of brought us a little bit closer to where we were previous to last year.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hassler.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the approval of minutes from our August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the updated board calendar.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And then the approval of our tax rules, tax warrant and establishment of tax rates two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And for personnel, Mr. Berger.
Good evening. I would like to respectfully request the Board approval of personnel items twelve point one through twelve point twenty-one.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Vice President Simmons to speak for a moment. Sure?
While Ms. Lori Hawke couldn't be with us tonight, the Board of Education would like to take a moment to recognize and thank her for her many years of dedicated service to our community. Very few people can say they've worn as many crusader hats as Lori. She has been on her journey with Monroe Woodbury since two thousand and six, starting as a physical education teacher and a coach. Role she's embraced for decades before stepping into the position of athletic director. In that role, Lori had oversight of the two thousand and eighteen capital improvement project that resulted in the beautiful athletic facilities our athletes and community members enjoy today. In January two thousand and twenty-two, Lori stepped up once again, this time as interim high school principal, before being appointed to assistant superintendent for human resources just a few months later. As a proud Monroe Woodbury graduate, Lori's love for the district runs deep. Her passion for our students, her tireless work behind the scenes, and her unshakable crusader spirit have left a lasting mark on our schools, our students, and this community as a whole. Tonight, even in her absence, we celebrate Lori's incredible impact and thank her for everything she's given to Monroe Woodbury. We wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Lori.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I would just like to mention that we do have the district clerk is being hired tonight, Ms. Diane Gentile. Diane spends quite a lot of years in Dr. Hassler's office, being our registrar, and among other things before that, and the Board is excited to welcome you as a new district clerk, and we look forward to working with you. And I know that you and Ms. Sudden will be a great team and big support for the Board and Cabinet, so thank you. And I also see Ms. Pennalino in there. Hi, and congratulations on your appointment. Is there any other members of the audience that is being newly hired? No? Okay, so we'll move on then. Welcome to everybody. Thank you. Next, I think, is business and financial, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you. I respectfully request approval of business and financial items thirteen point one through thirteen point five, which includes eight contracts, three donations, and a declaration of obsolete items.
Any questions for Mr. Cahill?
No.
No? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and next is, is there a motion for the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education to approve? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Recommendations of the Committee on Special Education for secondary, the first one was preschool. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion carries. Recommendations on out-of-district? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Don't we normally do the whole section, I'm sorry?
You know what, it's a different format for me here, so I'm going to do it like this and make sure we cover everything. And the last one is special education, preschool education. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And reports by Board and Central Office. Dr. Hassler?
I'd like to thank the Board for their approval of the Code of Conduct this evening and for your insight in developing it. Congratulations to the newly appointed staff, congratulations to Diane. Ms. Tabor was correct that Diane and I have worked together for ten years, she's been a true asset to the CNI office, she's literally registered hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids into our school district, and, you know, I'm happy to see you onward and upward to bigger, better things, so congratulations to you. I certainly would like to echo Ms. Simmons' comments regarding Lori. Little-known fact, Lori's history with the Hassler family goes very, very deep. She started as a PE teacher when my brother was in high school, so she knows Hasslers way, way back. To think about the hundreds and thousands of kids that she's impacted in her time in education, I wish her nothing but health and happiness and a very enjoyable retirement. Summer programs are in full swing, summer school graduation is next week, so we're very excited to celebrate an additional round of graduates as they move on from Monroe Woodbury to do great things, and thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Novak?
Just want to echo the sentiments to the new hires. Welcome to your new roles. A huge thank you to Lisa for stepping in the role over the last couple of months, it's been a big help to the Board. Huge congratulations to Lori Hawke, well-deserved retirement. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Morales?
Just like to welcome all of our new staff members to Monroe Woodbury. Welcome to Diane. We look forward to seeing our new teachers at orientation Monday and Tuesday of next week, and congratulate Ms. Hawke on a very well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Siriella?
I just want to wish everyone a great rest of the summer. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
Good evening. I too would like to welcome the new hires. I've had the privilege of meeting with many of them over the last few weeks, and I could say that the buildings, the directors, and the district is doing an exceptional job with those that we are bringing into the district and also retaining as well and moving on into different positions, which leads me to congratulate Diane, who will be our, you know, new district clerk, and also Franca, who's here with us as well, who will be moving into a teaching assistant position. Again, examples of our own staff who are excelling and doing really well and being promoted through, through our district. I too, obviously, would be remiss if I did not thank Lori Hawke for really everything that she has done for our district, but also on a personal level, I've had the privilege of working alongside Lori in various roles over the past twenty years, and certainly it's an understatement to say her dedication, her passion, and her commitment will be greatly missed, but we wish her the absolute best on a well-deserved retirement and what the future holds for her. So, and with that, I'd like to say good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Beas?
Congratulations, Diane. Looking forward to work with you in a different role. Your valuable knowledge of registration is not going too far, but that's awesome. Lori, congratulations, well deserved. One of the important projects that we are working as a district is transitioning to the new phone system, to Cisco Call Manager. So on, on August twenty-first, around three fifteen, we will be cutting over to the new system, and this is, this is critical because it's, we are moving from four-digit extensions to the five-digit extensions. This allows us to be future-proofing a little bit, so when we decide to take the next step and then add any phones or lines, this will help us to be prepared with this migration. But as every migration brings some interesting changes, we are working with our internal stakeholders to give them information as we, as we get near the cut over, and we'll be putting some blurb on the website for the community as well.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all our new hires and congratulate them and welcome you into the Monroe Woodbury family. Diane, looking forward to working with you in this capacity. Lisa, thank you for your invaluable assistance during the last couple of weeks, really appreciate you. To Lori, have a wonderful retirement, I hope you enjoy yours as much as I enjoy mine. Seriously. I hope everybody's having a great summer, and I'm looking forward to graduation next week.
Have a good evening. Mr. Cahill?
Okay, I'd just like to thank the following organizations for their donations to the district tonight. So New York School Insurance Reciprocal donated a thousand dollars to the high school guidance office, New York Jets donated a thousand dollars to the girls' flag football team, and Orange and Rockland donated a six-hundred-dollar STEM grant to North Main Elementary School, so thank you for that. We approved the tax rates, or the Board did tonight, I just want to remind everybody that although the levy increased by one point five percent, the actual five-town tax rates, our district goes into five different towns and their segments can vary and will vary based on something called equalization. And I won't go deeply into this process, but, but we have to go through an apportionment process each year, which means we take those, those five segments, the levy is like a pie, and the pie is divided into five pieces, and we have to equalize those segments because they assess at different levels of market value and bring them to market value, one hundred percent. And then we do an apportionment, which decides the size of those slices of the levy pie, and there's a state equalization rate which changes each year, and that can sort of distort the tax rates, the tax base can also change, that's also sort of a factor that can distort this. So a one and a half percent levy increase for our two largest communities, Monroe, is actually a two-point-oh-eight percent increase, and for Woodbury, it's a decrease of one-point-six-five percent. So again, we control the size of the levy and the increase, one and a half percent, but there's a whole other process which affects the individual tax rates. I also want to congratulate Lori, wish her all the best in retirement, I think she's done next week, and I hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Koifman?
I just wanted to echo the sentiments. Welcome to Diane, Lisa, thank you very much for stepping up. Lori, I'm jealous. And I really want to thank the Cabinet for, you know, consistent work, you guys don't stop working, ever, and looking forward to starting a new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Norman?
So I want to congratulate all of our newly appointees, also want to wish Ms. Lori Hawke well in retirement. As the New York State personal electronics ban in schools law goes into effect, we're going to continue to share information. Just a reminder that we will be holding two virtual crusader chats on Monday, August twenty-fifth, at lunchtime, a lunchtime chat at twelve-thirty PM, and an evening chat at six PM. Please feel free to visit the website and complete the online form if you want to participate, and we'll certainly send you a Google Meet invitation closer to the event day. The much-anticipated printed calendar is currently in production. As in past practice, every family will receive one calendar, which will come home with your student on the first day of school. Additional copies will be available at local libraries, town halls, and senior centers. All families will receive a district newsletter All families will receive a district newsletter via email during the last week in August. This newsletter will include important information about upcoming changes during the 25-26 school year, an introduction to the district's strategic plan process, and administrative staffing updates. School-level monthly newsletters will reconvene in mid-September. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Vice President Simmons.
I want to say a huge congratulations to all of the summer graduates, wishing you well on your journey. And as I say, with all the graduates, when you make it big, don't forget the little people. Also, welcome to Diane. Definitely looking forward to what years of extensive experience in the district will bring to the district clerk role. Huge thank you to Lisa for holding the fort down, and I'm looking forward to all of the work that we continue to do with both of you. I'm going to mirror my absent board member, Mr. Reynolds. Welcome to the new teammates. We look forward to you joining the Monroe Woodbury family or growing in the Monroe Woodbury family. I want to give a shout out to communications for all of the wonderful summer posts. I've enjoyed seeing the Monroe Woodbury students on their journeys through the summer. I'm hoping to see all of the wonderful photos during the school year, so wishing everyone a wonderful rest of the summer. I'm going to say that I'm also jealous of Lori because she gets to wake up every day and decide what she wants to do now, so very jealous of that. And I'm looking forward to a very wonderful, positive school year. So enjoy the rest of the summer and see you in September.
Thank you. I think a lot of what I wanted to say has been said, but I will give a thank you to Dr. Hassler for tonight's both updates. You know, very comprehensive information that you shared with us, so we appreciate that. And to Dr. BS and everybody that helped Mr. Cahill with the distraction-free learning. I know it was a big lift to get through this summer, but I'm looking forward to it really working flawlessly. That's what we're going to put out there, so. Good intentions. And thank you to our retiring staff for the many years of service that you gave to our district, especially Lori Hawke, who has been invaluable to so many students and staff during her tenure here. So special congratulations to her. And I think that's it. I am also looking forward to graduation next week for our summer graduates. And like Vice President Simmons said, I really do enjoy the updates on social media of where our students are, and I was also saw a staff member's post yesterday, so I thought that was extra special. So thank you for all the work that goes on during the summer months. Everyone thinks that the summer is just a time for, you know, unwinding, but there's a lot of work that is actually happening by our staff and our cabinet and our superintendent. So thank you for your commitment. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn it to an executive session to discuss a matter related to personnel and salary. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.